And they're done. I don't know, it's my caliber order.
Are we going down there?
We're going.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah. We driving in that stall?
We got a mistake.
Yeah, yeah, I want to do an indication, we have to do it.
We're so good at.
Oh, the one must be there.
Going out.
If you understand, Mark, if you know that there is only one. The type of pump that we use in the whole city.
Oh, really?
Was in San Marcos. It's a, it's a pressure pump. Boost the pressure booster pump that uses a rubber air dish. Two thousand dollar pump. But it's, yeah.
I would have no one.
We burned two of them off.
I'm sorry. Legal's not gonna be here, legal is at another meeting.
That's not my understanding. We talked over earlier.
Not a worry, that's coming.
There's no one for us.
Ready to go?
So I'm gonna do me a sandwich. Alright, um, good evening, we're gonna start our meeting with our indication.
Father, thank you for the gift of this day. Thank you, Father, for the rain that you sent us this afternoon, the rain that you sent Saturday. Pray, Father, you continue to descend it as we continue to recover from this drought. We pray, Father, for your wisdom, your discernment, counsel this evening, Father, as we look at this evening's agenda. Pray that we can guide and direct our city into a path of its future prosperity. That you be with us and guide us in all things, in Jesus' name.
Right, and we'll call this meeting. Order at six thirty P M. Here we go. Alright. Um, so on the date, I, um, we have regular agenda items, two A. Hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance in the city of Bolvardi, Texas, approving a special use permit at forty-four hundred U S Highway two eighty-one north, Suite One, Spring Ranch, Texas. Seven eight zero seven zero, permit the operation of theater stage live performance venue. Outside as an accessory use, amending the zoning ordinance, directing the amendment of the zoning map, repealing, deflating ordinances and providing a severability clause and an effective date.
Alright, it's hundred and, uh, page fourteen. Or actually, uh, page eighteen is better. Alright, so mayor and council, uh, this is for, uh, request a special use permit to allow, um, live music to be performed at the library cigar lounge, uh, which was previously approved, the lounge itself by an S U P of three months ago. Uh, this is similar to the setup they have at Find in the Village. The music's intended to provide audience for the, uh, patrons of the business. It's not like the goat where there might be screaming goat, where there might be ticketed events and people coming in. Um, and so the planning and zoning commission recommended approval and, uh, of the request. And gave them similar hours, uh, recommended Sunday, two P M to eight P M, Monday to Thursday, eleven A M to eight P M, Friday and Saturday, eleven A M and thirty P M. And, uh, the acting is here, yes, there is, if you have any questions.
How did those hours mishap what we ran it for somewhere?
I believe that same, uh, as the ones provided in the village.
I think that's a screaming goat, the application of moral service. Danny, didn't Shake B Morgan have live music for a free time?
Not legally.
I have a question. My recollection is that at the time, the first S U P was drafted, they were asked specifically whether there was gonna be live music and they said there was not. So, uh, curious to know, is this primarily because you've got a grand opening event or is this because? I guess what I'm getting at, can we off, can we offer them instead a special event permit for their grand opening? If that's the issue? I'm wondering what's changed since their initial request.
Um, I mean, that, I'll.
I don't know, that, that's not really my, I thought it was kinda like, it was kinda mentioned and then we told them at the time, well, if there was something wanting to come back for you, you'd have to kind of, yeah. I think it just wasn't at the time and wasn't. But no, that's just how I.
Yes, we were just trying to get a soft opening, which we've been soft open for about six weeks. And now that we're launching the grand opening, we want to do, that's something we want to do on a regular basis. You know, like every week and stuff like the other guys, it's not what we want to do. Just a lot of planning work, our, ours is probably more of a chill live environment, so to have a big party.
Would you, you, you would take any objections though, to the one, one time, like you questioned me?
But I mean, it would be nice to be able to have a little more feel, I got to do, but the plan is not have it.
This backs up to a residential area, does it not?
Yes.
Yes, the difference is there, if you live on that little thing or have to stay right behind it, that rectangle thing, that's a warehouse building that blocks sound. The other thing too is we're facing towards two eighty-one, we're not facing the neighborhood at all. So the sound for them is gonna be minimal compared to some other venues that may be half a half, half to neighborhood, half to the. We're always planning and zoning after the, kind of all the.
Right, and our notice was sent to all residents in the area.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
I don't think we got any negative response background.
Yeah, I think it's a little different being in the town.
Right.
When not physically.
Was the speaker firing for two eighty-one? I'm sorry.
Second or third application for outdoor music venue at this year, is that right?
Yeah, the third.
Um, uh, no, it was last year.
Okay.
So twine, and this is the second.
The second.
Yes.
Do we have a separate ordinance regarding music venues?
Not correct. I think it's all through special use permit. Talk about the bill.
Um, so outside, outside amplification of sound is a special use permit used. It's not allowed by right, but it is on the used chart.
Probably be, probably a good idea for.
I'm just wondering if it makes sense, if this is one of the, um, later, let's say, we got on the. That's something that we can talk about later. We need to expand track here and. Okay, so. Just thinking about present. Um. Any more comments, any more questions, more comments?
Yeah, uh, this, so Danny, this follows the property though too, right? This is one of those.
So it follows the property, but it's limited in that, um, it has to be tied to one of the allowable uses in the zoning district. So if, if the cigar bar closes and nothing else opens up, then the authorization for this ceases until another use that's allowed by right comes in. So this can never become the primary use of property.
Right, okay, I just wanted to confirm that as well.
I got a question, just on this, on this map, I guess it's, it's, it can tell me right now. The, the parking twenty spaces to the north, is that parcel part of this property or is?
Yes, so there's a space right behind that, that is another parking that belongs to the urban ranch. So that parking is all that there, all the way down is a road and parking of all part of the property.
Okay.
Urban ranch used it now, but.
You guys can do it, get out.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve an ordinance to the city of Bolvardi, Texas, giving a special use permit at forty-four two zeros, U S Highway two eighty-one north, Suite One, Spring Ranch, Texas, seven zero zero zero, permit the operation theater stage live performance venue. Outside as an accessory use amendment, zoning ordinance, directing amendment of the zoning map, repealing, deflating ordinances, providing severability clause and ineffective.
Uh, you recommend this?
Yeah, the recommendation. So the ordinance is drafted that way?
It is.
Yes.
So you can, yeah.
Two seconds?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove.
Congratulations, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Good night. Alright, two B. Hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance established for zoning for approximately zero point two zero one square miles land territory located south and east of the Bell Oak Ranch subdivision, north of the Montiolas subdivision and west of the Centennial Ridge subdivision adjacent to the city of Bolvardi, Texas.
Alright, mayor and council, uh, this, um, for those of you who were on council back then, we approved, uh, development agreement with this property back in January. This is an old non-annexation, non-development tract. Uh, in order to allow for its development, they had to amend that agreement, which provided that it will be developed as a five acre plus, uh, subdivision. Uh, that agreement was approved in January, the property was formally annexed in July, and we're just going through the process, uh, now we're zoning it R one, five acre lots in accordance with that previous agreement.
Questions? No questions?
It's just the next phase of the process.
Give you more, give you more questions?
Joe, nobody's.
Okay.
We have nobody, okay. So, um, alright, so everybody's good with no?
You good with it?
Nobody, okay, um, alright, so you want, got a motion for this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Alright, I make a motion. I have two people, hold a public hearing to consider a board establishing zoning for approximately two two zero one square miles of land generally local without, in East of Velo trade subdivision, north of the Motello subdivision and west of the Centennial Ridge subdivision, adjacent to the city of Bolvardi, Texas. I make a recommendation to approve that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, same? Two C. Discussing a possible approval of an ordinance, city council of the city of Bolvardi, Texas, granting a special event permit to Bolvardi Music in the Park for the use of the Bolvardi Community Park on September thirteenth, October fourth and October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and waiver or modifications, chapter sixteen, section one six, point zero one, point zero zero one and chapter fifteen, section twenty-five, point zero three, point zero zero one, speed three, one five zero two, point zero zero eight and one five point zero three, point zero zero two, and one five point zero two, zero zero nine, one seven. Code of ordinances of the city of Bolvardi, Texas to waive food truck permit fees, waive personal liability, allow the use of vehicles to access the gazebo, waive established fees and operate or use non-producing. What did I say, use?
Noise.
Noise producing devices, I'm sorry, excuse me. Alright, questions?
Well, I will be abstaining providing two dots here for being a matter.
Alright, a little competitive. Alright.
So mayor and council, um, I wasn't here at the last council meeting, it's my understanding that there was some concern about not having, uh, the event producer provide, uh, insurance. Um, did we provide a copy of that?
The quote is in the. Yes.
My understanding, your request that they provide a quote, which you guys have now, I believe it's a hundred and seventy dollars. Do we have any? Okay.
Not bad, well, six.
Yeah, no, it's very.
So, good, good deal.
Yeah.
So at the last, uh, helpful session, uh, yeah, we were asked as an organization, B C P A, Bolvardi Community Parks Association to get a quote, see what the, the cost was. Um, as you see, I shared that with the staff, I can give you a copy. Uh, it's, it's not, it's, uh, unreasonable amount for a million dollar coverage. But during the process of, um, giving all the information to State Farm, they required an address and we gave them that park. They said, man, you can't use that, cause that's how we would hold meetings. The only other thing I could say is like my home address, right? So I gave them my home address and that's what the quote is based on. But that opens up a question of what kind of liability are we taking on personally and as an organization, since this is a new arrangement?
I don't know how your insurance policy is work or how they fix that with you at State Farm. But we do know that subsequently legal and request that we cannot put this event underneath our insurance, right? So are you doing this with Music in the Park or the park board or how are you?
So, B C P A, Bolvardi Community Parks Association, was the umbrella five oh one C three.
Okay.
It was the only organization to start with.
Correct.
Under that umbrella, other organizations were created for specific purposes, one of the organizations is the garden. And, and then when we decided to have volunteers to put on these events, they decided to create another sub-entity underneath the five oh one C, umbrella of B C P A called Music in the Park. We have, the checking accounts are linked and, but we have our own, we manage the own, our own, uh, donations and then outflow of cash for, uh, you know, paying the bands and so on. So it's all under B C P A, that's why I said, you know, the, the quote would be created under the B C P A five oh one C three entity. But I, again, this is the first time I've dealt with that, cause we've always thought we were under city insurance, so I don't, I, I just, I, I need to do some more research.
So I. I guess what it looks like is that Music in the Park, right, is the insured on here. So, did you explain, I mean, did you work that out with them and tell them what it was?
Yes, in fact, they're one of our sponsors, they've been to our events.
So I would suggest that you ask them what that liability would be, cause we're not at Bolvardi.
Yeah, exactly, I, I, I didn't expect, I just wanted to say where we're at in the process.
Cause I'm gonna say for peace of mind, it's a surprise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we not, we think it should cover.
Right.
Is this an annual premium or is this pretty?
That's for.
That's an outstanding budget.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
So, what I, I would suggest that you go back to State Farm and then State Farm can answer that.
Yeah, we also have to offer, that's another sponsor, we asked.
I think so, Danny, correct me if I'm right or wrong, we'll need a certificate of insurance signed over to certificate of additional insurance.
Right, they get an insurance policy that lists the city of Bolvardi as an additional insurer.
For the one million.
The, yeah, the, um, the, the five oh one C three of the parks, um, well, yeah, they, uh, they were never covered by the city's insurance. The city was the only one that was ever covered by our insurance. Uh, the purpose of this is to give us an additional policy to claim on before we have to get ours, if the city ever is held liable for anything. But, and maybe that was misunderstanding from the, from previously, but the city's never provided any liability protection from B C P A.
We never, we never talked about that.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure everybody knows that.
We just assume that if something happened. It's just like you're dealing with car insurance, if someone hits you, the preference is to hit their insurance first before you go to yours. And so we generally require people to provide us that extra layer of their own insurance.
Exactly.
In case something happens on our side. And that's what was waived, uh, previously.
So, I guess my thought is, is, I, I mean, we don't have a problem with Music in the Park. What we have an issue with is the insurance. So we, and, and like we said, if we get the insurance worked out, we can get that approved and we have no issues. I don't think, you know.
Right.
Backing this up, right? But we do need to get this fixed before that happens.
Right, so what's, so, I need to see some more time to figure out the
Okay.
The, the personal exposure for the board members?
Okay, so your first one is which day? What is the first one, the first one is September thirteenth?
Yes, so I, I anticipate we should be able to straighten that out, do I have to come back in here and ask again? Or do you say? The ordinance has been revised to take out the exemption for that. So if you pass the ordinance, they still have to provide that before we can authorize them to use the park. So you can pass the ordinance, but if they don't provide it, you have to.
Okay.
But you wouldn't have to come back.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So some, subject to our receipt of a certificate of additional insurance.
And it's already been, the ordinance has been drafted, say that.
Okay, okay, um, alright, any questions from anybody?
Cause I think it's great work.
Yeah, this is exactly. Everybody's covered, uh, oh wait, there was one question was, um, Legal said that we needed to review the waiver. Did he tell you about that waiver?
No, uh, I think it was a mistake or confusion that they didn't understand that we already had one, but our previous attorney's drafted.
Okay.
And they've already signed that they have that, so.
Okay.
I, I.
Alright, then good, you don't have to worry about that waiver, then we're okay. Okay, um, anybody else have a question? And I guess this is the one they accepted over this, so it's in the packet. Alright, so they'll just need to fill it out? Oh, I included the one that Mr. Grove got it.
Oh, I haven't seen that one, I don't.
That little one I forwarded to earlier.
Oh, um.
We already have.
We already have one, I think he thought either that we didn't or that the applicant had drafted that and it's the one the city's attorneys gave us previously that we.
Oh, I know what he was talking about, I remember, he said that the one that we had, the waiver and assumption that we had, each person attending would have to sign it, so he did one, it was just for music. Yeah, it's just for Music in the Park.
This one takes care of that.
Music in Park time. Yeah, they don't have to do, it takes place for the other one that.
Actually, I would think that State Farm would sign it, because they're the insurer, they're the insurer.
No, you would sign that. Music in the Park would sign that, this isn't an, this isn't an insurance.
Okay.
Okay, it's just the waiver, alright, um, okay, questions? Anybody? You're good?
So I'm a little confused, just to clarify, are we now asking them to sign the attorney provided harmless clause?
Correct.
In place of what they had signed previously?
Correct, from two to one to ten on packet. They'll find this one and then they'll also produce the, the certificate of insurance.
Additional insurance.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I make a motion. Yes, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the ordinance, uh, waiving law of mine, chapter fifteen and chapter sixteen of Bolvardi city ordinances as listed, uh, subject to receipt of a certificate of additional insurance and execution of the release of harmless agreements.
I'll second.
Right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, minus three. Question, question? Moving on. Two D, consider and take action on an interlocal agreement between the city of Bolvardi, Comal, independent school district for the provision of law enforcement services.
G.
Yes.
So we inserted.
For Legal.
Yeah, yeah, so we inserted exactly what the city attorney recommended, did we insert? And that's what we did, and coming back to you, we up, we did update the numbers to the current numbers, it's the last time we did have those. Uh, so it should be a current valid concept at this point. Do you have to answer any questions, do you have any questions?
Yeah, as long as it has the. So the session, we're ready for question?
We're good, well, we just needed to move the contract, anybody have? The contract, the contract's great, I mean, I ran through it, everybody felt comfortable with what they read, yes, okay. And, uh, I know Legal reviewed it. Uh, no, they have not.
They have not signed my money yet, it's supposed to go, I think this, this Thursday, I think, if I'm not mistaken, to the, to the board, to their board.
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement, provision of law enforcement services as presented to council.
Second.
Second, Jason? All in favor? Okay, alright, so we are going to, um, going to, okay, we're gonna do executive session with legal counsel, he's gonna be calling it. So it's, we agree. And we are discussing, wait a minute, I'm, uh, three A, show it to Texas government code, uh, five five one point zero seven one, consultation with the attorney, the city council will meet in private consultation with legal counsel to seek the advice of its attorneys about pending or contemplation litigation, a settlement offer and on, and or on a matter which is the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Farm of Texas conflicts with chapter five five one of the government codes with. Uh, number one is gonna be amendments to chapter one of the city's code of ordinances and two, the Franco and Wartab versus the city of Bolvardi, Texas, Charles West. Uh, C A number five twenty-four, C V zero zero seven zero eight O L G in the United States District Court, Western District of Texas, San Antonio Division. CA number five twenty-four, CB zero zero seven zero eight O L G, in the United States District Court, Western District of Texas, San Antonio Division.
So, basically what we wanted to do is we wanted to call and do a workshop with y'all. A shores workshop. And some of y'all are new, some of y'all haven't been through this before. And so council wanted to have y'all to work together with council and answer questions for y'all. And also you can answer some questions for us and figure out how we're going to work a little bit better. And making it more of a, you know, better way of us working together from one week to the other. Well, that would be two weeks. But, okay, all right.
And also if you have any questions about, you know, your role or anything like that, city managers and staff members can help with any of those questions.
Okay. All right. So who wants to open? I'm gonna let y'all open. Ted? You have your list? Ted was on planning and zoning.
I was.
I don't really have a list, but one of the things that I frequently noticed when I was chair of planning and zoning is that there were significant discrepancies between decisions that we reached in planning and zoning and decisions that we reached in council. And I'm not sure if it's because we didn't understand the implications of some of the decisions that we made, or the precedent for some of the decisions we made, or other things like that, but I find one thing would be useful to try to get us a little bit more closely calibrated. Because many times I found that decisions made in planning and zoning put city council in a position of being bad guys. And that's not necessarily where we want council to be. Coming from planning and zoning, I don't think it's your desire to make us look like bad guys when we are trying to interpret or, let's say, take decisions that you have made about whatever, and then bring those back into the city. And how do we do it? It seems like we should be more likely to put a court. We may have a different, you may have a take that goes a little bit this way, or we may have a take that goes a little bit this way on council, just because of different pieces of information that are available to us. But we don't want the position of making planning and zoning look like they're not quite up to it. And you don't want the position of putting your city council in a position of, like, we have to be bad guys to do this, interpret decisions that you make. So how we get more closely calibrated so that we're tracking equally, let's just say parallel. There's always going to be differences of opinion in how we do things. But we do want to track parallel, I think. I think that's a good goal, is to track parallel. And then we'll, the space in the middle, that's the space that we negotiate the difference between planning and zoning and the difference between city council. Those are just my thoughts. Throw that out there. Okay. And then planning and zoning committee, y'all state y'all's names. I'm just asking you guys to put your names back around. I can't read that one, thank you so much.
Greg, four, Jason Newey, Fred, their eighth place, for career.
Yay. I'm gonna get up. You ready now? Okay, so, basically what we wanted to do is we wanted to call and do a workshop with y'all, a shores workshop. And some of y'all are new, some of y'all haven't been through this before. And so council wanted to have y'all to work together with council and answer questions for y'all. And also you can answer some questions for us and figure out how we're going to work a little bit better and making it more of a, you know, better way of us working together from one week to the other. Well, that would be two weeks, but, okay, all right.
And also if you have any questions about, you know, your role or anything like that, city managers and staff members and all this can help with any of those questions.
All right, so who wants to open? I'm gonna let y'all open. Ted, you have your list? Ted was on planning and zoning.
I was.
Nobody wants to go first?
I don't really have a list, but one of the things that I frequently noticed when I was chair of planning and zoning is that there were some significant discrepancies, discrepancies between decisions that we reached in planning and zoning and decisions that we reached in council. And I'm not sure if it's because we didn't understand the implications of some of the decisions that we made or the precedent for some of the decisions we made or other things like that, but I find one thing would be useful to try to get us a little bit more closely calibrated because many times I found that decisions made in planning and zoning put city council in a position of being bad guys. And that's not necessarily where we wanted council to be. Coming from planning and zoning, I don't think it's your desire to make us look like bad guys when we are trying to interpret or, let's say, take decisions that you have made about whatever and then bring those back into the city. And how do you do it? It seems like we should be more likely to put a court. We may have a different, you may have a take that goes a little bit this way or we may have a take that goes a little bit this way on council just because of different pieces of information that are available to us. But we don't want the position of making planning and zoning look like they're not quite up to it. And you don't want the position of putting your city council in a position of, like, we have to be bad guys to do this, this, interpret decisions that you make. So, how we get more closely calibrated so that we're tracking equally, let's just say parallel. There's always going to be differences of opinion and how we do things, but we do want to track parallel, I think. I think, and I think that's a good goal is to track parallel. And then we'll, the space in the middle, that's the space that we negotiate the difference between planning and zoning and the difference between city council. Those are just my thoughts, throw that out there, okay, how, how do, how do we do that? I don't know, but I think that would be a goal.
That's why we're here, to work together, right? Frankeska?
Yeah, I'm so.
Watson?
Please call me Francesca, it's fine. I may be the least formal person, so truly, Francesca is fine. I'm new here and I've worked with some of you. I think the goal for me is for you to really do some work upfront to vet these things before they get to us. The comprehensive plan is something that really you guys are responsible for advising us on and how the things that are coming to the city align with the comprehensive plan. We're trying to cast a vision for the city moving forward. And I think it's important to take the requests that come before you into the larger context as opposed to one-off, right? How does it affect this one person that's important? Yes, but also in the larger scope of how that's going to affect the city in the long term. And that includes things like setting precedents. It includes things like, what we just, I know that question just recently came up that involved drainage. You know, we can't, drainage doesn't stop at the property line. It, there's a, you know, it's a wider issue than just that property owner. And so for myself, and I know that part of it is because I'm still learning the road, it would be useful to know that you guys have asked the hard questions and that you've done the work to compare those requests to the larger vision. That you've perhaps suggested that they put a pause on this and go back and work with staff to answer some additional questions, which is absolutely in your authority to do. And I do feel like maybe part of this disconnect is because we haven't had this conversation to say, hey, you know, you guys can, you guys can ask these questions, you guys can push back, you guys can suggest that they go and do it for. So that when we get a recommendation from you, we can feel like it's been, you know, you've put it through its basis. You've really tested it to see where it lands in the, in the larger context. And I, I think that that would help to close that gap maybe with what you guys are recommending and what the ultimate decide.
Yeah, I mean, Francesca touched on a lot, but I was thinking of, you know, just, you know, vetting, you know, stuff like that. I was at the last P and Z meeting, I think you handled that the right way. Never a bad thing to get more information, it takes more time. You know, we're all in this together and makes our job easier when it gets here to the diocese or with council. But, you know, just, we're very, sustainability, you know, comp plan. It, it's a hard line to walk between, you know, having people with property rights in mind and, you know, following our vision for the future of Bolvarney, so I mean, it's a tough job. And thank y'all for taking this on, so.
So, one of the things that I want to talk about was, the majority of which I'll probably see is variance. I know when I was on planning and zoning, that's what it was, variances. I know that when Houseman Bullock was on city council, he made it a point of bringing up when people would bring variances before, does this meet the four requirements in the subdivision code or ordinance? And I don't know, you know, if everybody's aware of, I don't know if everybody on this, guys here is aware of what they are. But if we read them from a strict reading, I think very few of the ordinances that we grant could be passed. I mean, I, it's, I pulled up on the subdivision ordinance. So, variances may be granted by the city council for non-procedural items provided the city council determines, and of course, it's interchangeable, city council and P and Z, y'all are just in our steps, just one, one step behind us. By the city council for non-procedural items provided the city council determines that undue hardship will result from strict compliance with the ordinance. A lot of times when a developer comes and they throw the variance book at us and I want this, 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 are those all undue hardships? Are those just things that, I'd say there's money, you know? And then it says, no variance shall be granted unless the city council makes affirmative findings as to all of the property. First one, there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the land involved such that strict application of the provisions of this ordinance with the private applicant of the reasonable use of the land. So that's the first thing. What kind of special circumstances do we have when we have a signed variance that somebody wants? Or some, you know, or any other, you know, what, what is different about that piece of property that would make it so that a variance is something that needed to be granted? You know, the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the substantial property right of the applicant. That's the second one. Three, the granting of variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or injuries to other property in the area. Now, that's one of the big things we have to come with drainage. And that's what we talked about where, you know, it doesn't stop at the property line. This drainage is cumulative. What happens upstream? What is it going to do downstream? And I think we need to take that into consideration. And the last one, the granting of the variance will not have the effect preventing the orderly subdivision of other land in the area in accordance with the provisions. But the thing is, we have to make affirmative findings as to all, not just one. And I think if we follow what we have in place in ordinance, a lot of these variances would be pretty easily dismissed. And that's just my, my take on it.
Houseman Alexander?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of what y'all are hearing, you know, kind of resides in council and just make sure we're kind of on the same page. Being on the city and y'all see as well, you know, on council now, I realize how important it is to take that feedback from you guys. You know, I look forward, right, so making sure that we have, you know, line in some ways. Like, I think Ted said it best, you know, with big B. If we're parallel, there's going to be some room in between and just kind of figuring that out between. But being that I'm sitting on both sides, you know, it's, I, being on this side, I'll die, it's like, Houseman A says, it's, you know, I look forward to seeing what P and Z is recommending, right? Because we want to, we want to hear that recommendation, we want to know that you guys have vetted either the variance request or, you know, whatever application you have in front of you that you guys have found that you diligence, which most of y'all are doing. We're not here to criticize that, it's just to make sure we, that, that you guys understand that as well, how important it is and valuable it is to make sure that those efforts are all ones being done on those recommendations just when, you know, we got agenda items that go till midnight. You know, it's like, it's, it's important to kind of have that, that backbone that you guys have looked at it, so. Appreciate, you know, one of the good things, it's just a good thing tonight seeing everybody here, so. One of the things is making, you know, making up meetings, right? You know, obviously, things happen like life happens and all of them can't be there, but just making meetings, you know, and making sure that you guys have input and saying what you guys are talking about because it, it makes an impact for me at least, let's speak for everybody, but it makes an impact for me when I read your recommendation or if I need to come back and look at what you guys are reviewing and what you guys have spoken about in, in a P and Z meeting. And, you know, I take that into account when I'm reviewing the agenda items, so. It, it plays a big role in, you know, there's been, there's been changes in the city. We've had a lot of city changes, a lot of council changes, so there's been changes, right? So, I think it's a good, good thing to have this meeting and, you know, we like to hear your feedback too because we don't want you guys sitting on an island by yourself thinking that, you know, that you guys are doing what you think is right, but you may not know it is. So, you know, any kind of feedback like that's, we're always, I don't think there's anyone else besides that who would be open to having that especially with any of y'all, so. You know, just know that y'all guys play a important role in, in helping shape the city and, you know, that's why we have that confidence built in you guys to, to be appointed and be in this position, so. Just look forward to continuing to work with you guys. You guys, you know, have this, you know, we want to see this collaborative dialogue, it needs to be and make sure we kind of fill those gaps we need to.
Yeah, we have faith in every one of you, otherwise you wouldn't be sitting. Because we have a bunch of that, and you're the ones that we said deserve, deserve.
Houseman Grant?
I don't have a lot to add, so just thank you for your volunteering time. I appreciate all your efforts, I know, personally, we all know this isn't something that we're paid to do or compensated for, it's just a service to our community. And y'all have the right stuff to occupy those positions. And I trust and respect everything that y'all produce to me. If I do have anything to add, just say, just remain objective in your conversations, let me know your resources. Me and Danny, Danny's a great resource and then he provides us feedback, I mean, just, you know, we can have, the agenda items, the recommend approval, but, you know, he can expound on some of the discussions and really secure our conversations and debate and take good direction. And if you have, if you guys include in one direction, we have to vote the other way. I mean, that's a job that we, I have no problem making someone uncomfortable with a decision that may be contrary to what they're expecting, but we're all doing our jobs here. Again, just thank you for taking the time out of your day and away from your family to do the job for, for Bolvarney.
Welcome and thank you again. I appreciate all y'all, you know, sat in meetings over the years and watched some of the meetings that are going on. And, you know, it's really hard to get presented with. There was a, I think one of the hardest items for P and Z and for us is when a developer shows up at the last minute and says, oh, here's my, my, you know, my presentation on the little drive and here, plug it in. Y'all haven't had time to do that, right? Y'all, you know, they come in, they change it, we have an engineer record that was in the last meeting. Nobody has it on any of our paperwork, you didn't have time to look at it, you're just hearing this guy come up and do his presentation, that's, that's tough, right? Because we get a lot of things last minute. But I think that together and working together and understanding, you know, what we're looking for and council has mentioned to you, and where you are and how we can assist you or how the city can assist you to getting done what you may have concerns or questions about or not feeling comfortable with either. And we just thought it was really good for us to come together and, you know, kind of talk it out. You know, what do you need for, for your job to make your job easier where y'all are at now? And, you know, in council, what they would like to see when things come to us, right? I, I think that if we're, I, I do a lot of homework prior to council on, on variances and breed and, you know, I'm studying and downloading stuff and working on all the different items. And, you know, and I know y'all are too. So somewhere maybe, you know, we work together and figure out, okay, so this information's coming to council. There's also that reason we decided to kind of wish council two weeks to have a second meeting for planning and zoning items so that when y'all have, y'all think, is that us enough time to re-review what you're sending to us? And then for us to be able to, to look at what the decision is there and if we're missing any documentation, then we can go and find that. But if y'all had the documentation prior to and it was taken into a space, you know, some time too, but how can we help each other and make this better and do a better job for what our vision is of our city? You know, we have an obligation to our city as elective officials. We appointed you and because we trust you, we know y'all can do a great job here and we're very excited to have you. So, go ahead.
Thank you for, for setting this up and for, you know, allowing us to have this dialogue. That was something at the last meeting that, you know, we talked about, we're like, we all really want to talk about what's coming forward in our city. And so I appreciate all of you for taking the time and really sharing your thoughts. I mean, we understand kind of when things come to our desk first and these coming to you, but a lot of us aren't, you know, they're off at city council meeting to hear your dialogue. I appreciate, I know Ted has come to ours a ton of times and we appreciate always having him some time to be able to give some of our, our feedbacks in the conversations that, that we had as well. I will say I'm a, a little, not taking it in a bad way, it's like a little surprised with, like, I didn't prepare anything for this type of conversation.
We want it to be organic.
I think you just got us five fifteen.
So what I, what I'm hearing and we go around here, the main thing I'm hearing is step back and, and I'm trying to listen through whatever I'm saying. I think a lot of the things are coming forward to you guys, you feel as though we could, you know, deny a little bit more or hold things back a little bit more, just save your time, kind of what I'm hearing, that.
I don't think it's deny. And I hope that Houseman Hayes is just saying, those are the items to be able to prove and take those into consideration because that's what we're doing, we're taking all of, does, does number one apply? Does number two apply? You know, maybe three doesn't apply, so why would, you know, we go to, we don't even need to go to four because three didn't make it. And, you know, it's in our, it's written in our, in our documentation and it's very easy to follow. And, I mean, that's what we're using. So, you know, y'all have the opportunity to use that too. And, and we're not saying, you know, by any all means, you know, we're going to tell you which ones we do and which ones not. That, that, y'all's prerogative, right? But, but all, you know, maybe it's the all of them.
I have something to add to that if I could.
Absolutely.
So, I really think it's fine all the time. I was gonna say, just, you want to talk about variance, we got it right here. Yeah, so, but what I look at is like in the past, it's been, okay, well, H P's got this, all right, I guess, can't really tell Chase, no, you know, buy, you know, are we comparable to what we're proving for these huge people like Walmart?
No, I get it, hundred percent.
And so, yeah, I just think it's fine, variance was just garbage and everybody needs one, I'm kidding. A hundred percent.
And, and we started working on, we don't even have to get back to that because he was.
So it almost puts me like, okay, here's another one, all right, we're gonna spend it on. Because there's really no ground to spend on it, so we'll just approve the same thing for another person house here three months ago. Thank you. Well, yeah, Greg said it, two meetings ago, I think he said that every occasion stayed on the zone.
That's right.
Yeah.
That really stuck with me because I was kind of getting caught in that whole, you know, it sounds reasonable, we're just going to go, I've always seen really pure degrees, but then here they're like, yeah, they really need that sign. They did, they need variance because of their, the way their building's positioned or something crazy.
We're, we're not going to be caught, we're not going to be caught up in that, we've always done it this way.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
You did it for them, you did it for them. No, no, that's, I'll stand on my head there and they'll watch me, but we, we will not be caught up in that. That's just because it's been done historically doesn't mean it's going to be done that way.
Right.
Right.
You gotta use discretion.
And we're using, and we'll walk in a line, we're trying to, you know, sometimes we feel a little ambidlock because, well, you know, like Ted was saying, you're sitting there, you want to advise because you, you have independent thoughts, independent minds and y'all will always go, y'all, sometimes y'all know things we don't know. And so we try to advise, but we don't want to be hard for about it. You know, we don't want to go, we want, we want to present a united front. We don't want to go in there and say, okay, you can't do that and be overruled by the city council. At the same time, we don't want to go in there and say, oh, we don't mind if you do that and the city council knows that, we don't. You know, one of the things that we spent the most time discussing was the goat, you know, was the sound ordinance, the goat. And there was a lot of conflicting information, there was, I had a hot spot, you know, it had county and big people involved and there's four men that bought a house behind the goat during COVID, it was dead. And then all of a sudden, these guys, seven-year-old kid that can't go to bed at night because they're so loud. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff there. And so we're trying to allow variables that you could discuss, but we don't want to be too open-ended. You know, we want to be able to present, you know, I don't mind saying no, I've seen everybody on this table say, say no. I don't like that. You know, Fred always good about saying, don't know why we want to give a variance, why would you have rules? You're going to get variance every time, you know? You know, James and Michelle, they, they are real adamant about the dark light and the water ordinance and the dark sky ordinance and stuff. And, you know, Brad will grab it into the ground, pick them up on the range stuff when he comes in, you know, because that's his expertise, we have people that can discuss any of these things. You know, all of us have our areas, what we don't want to do, we don't want to try to not give you an option. I guess maybe we're being too open-ended, maybe we should be a little harder.
Well, if I can speak to that, I'm sorry. I think as an advisory board, we're looking to you to advise us. At the end of the day, the decision is going to be this council to make. But we're asking you to think through all the ramifications and to tell us what you think the best path forward is for the council to make a decision based on the research and the thought that you've put into it. I want to mention too that there, we're governed by local government code as well with regards to this. And there are some very specific things. You know, we can only pass early regulations in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And those ordinances must be designed to, I'll just read them quickly. lessen congestion in the streets, secure safety from fire panic and other dangers, promote health and the general welfare, provide adequate life and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population or facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, pools, parks and other public departments. So, you know, these are, these are not small things. This is the entire community depending on us ultimately. But we depend on you to advise us to do that deep digging, to ask the questions.
May I ask what that, what that would look like coming forward to you? Say, I do feel like we do, that could we be a little bit better? Yes, but I do feel like we do ask a lot of questions. We do a lot of research and we do provide as advisory statement. But is there something more that can come forward in your, in your packet that city can provide to you that shows more of what we're advising?
And really what has helped out a lot is Danny's interpretation of what a discussion applies to ours. So maybe some, you know, focus comments to share with Danny or whoever is going to be at next council meeting.
We're gonna do it like, yeah.
You know, you may want to consider doing like, like the Parks Board or does something like that and have a planning and zoning update so that somebody is here at each council meeting. That's not something we require, that's something that might help. And then, you know, kind of do a round robin, okay, you know, James, you're going today, you know, you're, you're there. Michelle, you're there next time. And it's just, you're there to go, if we have any questions, well, what was P&amp;Z? What, what were y'all thinking on this issue? What brought you that? So somebody can go, oh, well, we toned in on the fact of X, Y and Z. And then we can look at and go, oh, okay, I, I see what they were, I see what they're doing. I almost see it as maybe if we, by speaking to the variance requirements a little better, we can actually make their presentation to us better. If y'all have denied based upon these things here, that gives them time to then go, oh, well, well, maybe I need to fix these few things. And then when it comes to us, it gives their application a better, better opportunity. So that's just one way to.
I mean, to, what's the difference between denying and table? Because at the last meeting, I could have just said no to the whole thing, but I felt like he needed the opportunity to come back a second time and, you know, flush out because.
I think it's that, I think it's the flushing out. If you think, okay, we're on the cusp of this, if we had more information, it might change our code.
Or if you, you know, you wanted these eight things and yours not get it. But if he went back and, and he talked to his people on the agenda or wherever and they said, do you really want this? And so give them what they want.
Yeah.
I would like to give that opportunity, but you know, honestly.
I think I'm into your thoughts.
The flooding downstream is just.
Well, you'll want to postpone it, yeah. You don't want to table it. Table is the same meeting.
Yeah, because, you know, if they have better, more information to clarify some of the things.
Wait, wait, table it is, has to, if you table something, has to be taken care of in the next 24 hours. So if you're gonna postpone it, they've changed.
That's if you want to not have to repost. Just table it generally means it comes back at the next meeting unless it's tabled for a general date. Denying would be a recommendation to post traffic council meetings.
You should say.
Once you've got all the facts, that's best.
So I, I just have something to that. And it should say postponed, yes.
That's news too.
Yeah, it should say postponed. Table something to a table later in that meeting that could happen within the next 24 hours. It should be postponed to another meeting.
The buzz guy needs a buzz bump. So it's gone to another date.
To another date, yes.
It's semantics, but it's important.
Yeah. It, it's all really just opportunity to get more information to clarify. You know, if you have everything that you, that you need, if they're not going to give anything that's going to change like in that situation, hey, I need this, 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 well, then we just.
But you got new information at the last minute, that means too, right? So you didn't even have time to look at it. And you're listening to a presentation there that you should have time to look at that, right? Y'all need to go back and study what he said. You didn't have the documentation in front of you, it wasn't in your packet, right?
I think, uh. To that point though, y'all need to know that I had lost time with that one in particular. Is that with the variance request, a lot of these variance requests were open ended. And if there was any way that with city, whenever they receive a variance request, that it has to have some sort of actual qualifying information included with that variance request. Instead of, we just need to cut and fill variance. We need to cut and fill variance for five feet, 10 feet, 20.
I think you can ask those questions, is what we're saying.
Yeah, we, and we, we did that.
You did, yeah, you did.
Uh, and that was why we decided to, to table or postpone because we didn't have that information and we didn't feel comfortable recommending either approval or denial because we didn't have that information. And fairly to Fred's point, he, uh, it would be really hard for him to get that information. I think that was like one of the conversations that we talked about because it is so early kind of in that process. Again, that's not, that's not our problem, right? But that was part of our conversation of, okay, well, when does he get that information? Can he have some of that now? Do we, you know, approve it to a certain point and then he finds out, okay, you're needing another to be great? Would we have to come back for another variance request? I think there's some sort of limitations within this variance request that we need to have that is city can filter even before he even comes to.
So can you phrase that as a recommendation to, is that a staff function, what I hear you saying? I, I. Yeah, how, how would you, how could we help you make that happen?
Really?
So Danny, let me ask a, a, just a question. Danny, so I guess what they're asking is before it comes to, to them, to planning and zoning, can, if it's an open, an open ended variance request, that they are asking there for to be precisely what they're asking for?
Can we do that?
Can we do that?
When it comes to like cut and fills.
It's inside, okay. So, uh, just the last one was an example. So within the P&amp;D request, there was a variance for cut and fill. But he didn't say to what limit. So technically he had approved that, he could have cut 100 feet of the power.
Technically it's not a variance, so it doesn't fall under the variance processes. Council could tighten PDD ordinance to say you can't ask for variance.
I know, but you can ask.
And possibly develop the variance process, but.
I'm sorry, can you, you expand on that for me, please?
Sure. So a variance is when you come forward and ask for a waiver of importance.
Right.
Plan development district standalone ordinance. And anything that's inciting is technically its own standalone ordinance, it's not a waiver from another.
So we could specify that the PDD cannot be accompanied by variance requests?
They can't authorize violation of other city ordinance.
Interesting.
Good.
I think that kind of the first, the fees of purpose of a PDD, right?
They make it more complicated. Usually, so they, they would need to apply for the PDD and the variance at the same time. The agreement work has improved.
Can we, can we do this before because they have any more property?
My, my, that's the point is like, to get that information from the potential developer. He has it on the property.
Yeah, chicken and egg.
And he's not going to invest the money in engineering to get that information for us. So we have to operate these vague understandings until he can hone in on what does he need? And at that point, he's so far in, it may not make sense. And that's the risk that a developer.
We start handling the gray stuff.
Yeah. And that's for customer service too, which is paramount being what we do. Um, but we really can't have the situation where we can just run them up with one. The last guy that came up with that, that property, he presented a site plan that was approved in, what, 2017? And it had a mixed, that multifamily commercial. We looked at that and I personally looked at that like, oh, I guess it's the plan of the site. When in fact, that is a site plan, go it out the window and it doesn't matter. But the one he was asking for R3, R2, where I would have just stood there and said, hold on, hold on. And we can kind of stop talking about this all together. And I'm wondering that if, if that individual or people like him could give that kind of advice from the city just right off the bat, like, hey, you're, you're headed in the wrong direction here. Can we kind of steer this? I think the city wants to see it fits. And I'm wondering if that doesn't save him a ton of time and us a really late time.
Exactly. And that's the other thing, y'all are late, late at night.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a Danny front office.
So, uh, um. Depending on how tight orders land. That sets the bounds of how they, the apple thing is. So we recently, or within the last year, tightened up plan development ordinance. That's why we got all the information that we got this time versus in the past, we might have got a site plan and a myriad of. And so if, if y'all want to tighten it up more, we can do that. If you feel like that still does not, and, and we were talking about accommodating a wide range of projects under that though. Some of them are massive, like Cardi Ranch and some are site specific that are really complex.
Right.
You know?
Exactly.
But if you want staff to. What am I trying to say here? Refine the, the ordinances that we're using to guide us with the process have to give us the authority.
You're limited by state law to some degree also.
Yeah.
With respect, with respect, limited by state law with respect to guidance we can give them?
Well, the shot clock you're talking about, if it's a, a cloud or something like that. But well, what we're gonna do, if they bring in something, we're gonna deny it. If it doesn't comply with the ordinance until such time. So the variance could be approved outside of the shot clock, um, time frame you're in.
So, but I think, so I think to Fred's point, it would be useful if, when they, when they enter, because I can see their point, right? He's trying to decide if he's gonna spend the money on the property. Before he spends the money on the property, he's gotta have some reasonable expectation. Is he going to be able to do some version of what it is he wants to do? And I understand that. So if I'm understanding correctly, I think you're saying if they enter into that process, is there some mechanism on the city side where we can provide guidance to them? To say, you know, you're asking for a variance. I mean, I don't know what that would look like. You, you guys might know best. But I think what I hear you're saying before it even gets to you, could there be some process?
It's like, on a personal level, if this individual, when he's applying, you look at the plan, you can say, okay, well, you understand that the city's overall plan is this and the city really wants to see more of R1 in this location. You're gonna have a very hard time pushing through this mixed use bag you've got here. While we're happy to help the kid in front of P&amp;Z and talk to them. I don't know if this play, if you could do that.
Oh, we don't, we don't have time.
Okay.
I think.
Cause I basically would be speaking for the guys in that chair. Say, well, you don't have much chat and never pull up.
A lot of what you are talking about.
That puts you in a bad, that puts you in a bad spot. Time wise, but you don't have the time to do all that individually. And the, and the younger people on your staff don't have to direct decently that either.
So from what I understand is we're talking about giving more guidance before they come before the city.
Which is, which is the idea, which is.
Right. Which traditionally, traditionally, a lot of that has been done by the mayor outside council meetings and P&amp;Z meetings. The McCarty project, like we're talking about, used to be half acre lots. He's now coming for it, the one acre lot. And that didn't happen on a council meeting.
Okay, so I'm gonna be the bad guy. And I am just gonna say, the mayor does not have the authority to act or negotiate on behalf of the city.
Right, but you're talking about giving the input.
I understand that, I understand that.
That's the responsibility of them. We are still.
According to charter is not.
That is not the responsibility of the mayor. That was a, that was a concoction of many years of the way it was done from a, it was general.
I, I'm not gonna speak, I'm not gonna speak to that. I'm gonna say, okay, charter. Wait, 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 one people, one person talks at a time, okay? Don't overtalk to everybody, everybody, okay? So I'm understanding what y'all are asking for. And it, and I guess maybe we're asking for the same thing, right? We'd like to see that by the time it gets to us, it's been studied and you have questions answered and all of those good things. You know, I'm just gonna, let's just use Chase, okay? So it went through P&amp;D, y'all approved their signs for Chase, right? And, and whatever. I drive and we're there the night before city council meeting and they had already put the signs up. How is it even approved and they're there, right? And they're not. And they're not, not compliant. That's where I'm gonna go, right? So these are things that, you know, they came as, oh yeah, we, y'all approved it, right? So we, why not put that on there? Hey, we're approving this, but this is the problems that we have with it. Tell us what it is. Then we know too, because we may miss something, say, oh, you know what? Hey, zoning copy, there's a little issue here. Maybe we need to go and look at this, right? Or, or let's post one it till we find out what the answer is, right? But I think that that's where we're trying to get to, to where we're all working together. Y'all are sending your thoughts to us because we're gonna range your thoughts and look at them, we're gonna consider them. We do. So give them all to us, right? And we're gonna look at them and then we're gonna apply our processes, processes to it. And then we're gonna make the right decision, you know, that is based upon what our vision is for our city and what our constituents really want out here, what, you know, we all want here. We all live here. And so that's more of what we're looking at and, and where we would get. And it sounds like that's what y'all would like to get. We have a great asset here, you know, we, Danny is full of information. Y'all can phone, you can call on, hey, hey, you know, this is coming, let's ask questions. We do, we ask questions. Hey, can you help us with this? I see it's coming up, but what about this? What's the history on that? Where was this, you know, 17 years ago? What was it? Um, do we have a plaque? Do we have a picture? Can we look at it? You know, get educated on it. Give us your thoughts and bring, bring it to us. And then we're gonna make the decision if you're based on that. You all agree.
And if you're gonna say anything like that, you know, or anything, please have the city manager do it. So who stood up to it?
Yeah, keep salute. Message us all, like, if you keep on seeing the same thing, like, we should get, change it over. You know, bright ideas.
Yeah, and that's what I.
You guys don't have to continually look at these things. And if you see something so wild and weird, you're looking at, you're like, why are we even looking at these pictures? Front office, say, hey, maybe not gonna sail through. I mean, to, to the, to an extent that human, you know what I mean? You can't take positions to speak for us, but we do. What I tell people when they ask is, this is what historically happened. Like if someone's done a quarter and bulk, I can say, here's a plan that was presented and council rejected in 2021. Here's a plan that was presented and rejected in 2021. For your information, I'm not telling you it's homework.
And applicant, that thing, that still said it, then it is, but it's.
Right. So, but yeah, we have potential to explain it to it. I hate listening, you know, ah, it's really got to be bar. So then whatever input that you have for us, just send us all an email. That way we're all salute and then we can chew on it, consider it. If you think breaks the agenda, we quote on it, change it, that's, that's. Don't suffer in silence.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, I was always, but remember that, you, but I didn't know at, with state law, what type of conversation we could have, you know, I.
That's how we did this so good.
Exactly. So if there is, you know, emails going back and forth, that's why I've never sent an email saying, hey, that, you know, going on. Cause I, we could.
Well, there is.
Candy bell.
I'm gonna ask a question.
They can email us, we can't start piggybacking off of this.
Correct.
That's, that's just give us the nod and we can chew on it. It's better to do blind copy than like someone replies all the time, you gotta, well, now you're gonna.
Just do it these easy.
Yeah. You don't want to start an email.
Do it these easy, that way they can't just keep replying because everybody else. So do, do, like after our planning and zoning meeting, if we gave you guys, you know, an email afterward just saying, hey, here are the main things that we talked about and that we did consider doing this. I think your package just says we either recommended it or you didn't.
Well, I'd like to ask the question.
Wait, wait a minute, I'm gonna answer your question. But when we do this and you, by law, everything else becomes an open record act, right? So if you don't put something in there that you don't want to be responsible for sharing later. We're all transparent on anything that is there and what we discussed in our emails and everything else. But just letting you know, cause that's part, when it goes back to council, anything that comes into us is open record, right? So, uh, you need to know that, right? Um, and this is part of all this learning process, you know, how you spend documentation and all that other good stuff. But, you know. Um, but you know, we we wanna hear from you. We wanna know what's going on. We shouldn't be two separate identities. Identities when we're working together for the same purpose, right? And we wanna be able to do this. Um, just information so that y'all know. I've been meeting with CPS and and Texas Water Company and uh, you know, Comal I S D, E F D. Um, you know, everybody that I can meet will see, you know, we need to know what our infrastructure, I'm a tech stop. All the engineers we're talking. Um, we wanna know where our infrastructure is gonna be and what have what. Where are we gonna be in ten years? You know, CPS right now, we have a very old infrastructure. Today, if the wind blow, we're offering out electricity out there, right? They have a plan to come out here and they're gonna do some work with us now that we've talked about it. But y'all need to know that information too, right? Or or that how wide is the fire truck, the new fire truck that we got when somebody's asking for a variance of twenty foot less on the street? And now if there's two cars on the street, the fire truck can't get up and down the road. You know, and you're gonna approve that variance, we all need to know that, you know, cause all of us are making that decision as much as you are and. These are things that we're gonna have to watch to and work through some some building relationships with these different entities and have them come to our city. And everybody be a part of that meeting and hear what's going on and what we're up against and what we're looking at, you know? We're going to battery power it out here. CPS may not be able to give us electricity, I've been informed in five years, so we're gonna go to battery battery power. They've bought up everything. They're closing their plant at Calaveras Lake. They're closing three different, you know, CPS units out there. They're doing everything they can to supply it. But we're one of the thirty one so, you know, cities that they. That they serve and. You know, we gotta know that. We gotta know what we're gonna do. We're gonna add a thousand homes up here? Well, wait a minute, did somebody get some information from CPS to figure out how's it gonna affect the rest of our city? How, what are we gonna do, you know? What about tech stop? We have somebody out there telling us, oh yeah, I clicked a tech spot and uh, this is how my road's gonna come up. Well, guess what? Your plan isn't even gonna be executed for seven years and no, you have not talked to tech stop. I already know. Because I spoke to the engineer, right? So we're up against this and we all need to have this information and we're gonna have to get to a place where we're sharing that. It was great when this was a small town and we didn't need all that. We're not a small town anymore. We're a big city and it's just gonna get big. I mean, we have San Antonio moving this way. We have, you know, it's coming this way, all four ways it's coming at us. And we've got to be in touch with these people. We need to know, we need to study, you know, what's coming in front of us. Because these people are coming in with everything. Oh, well, that's the way they do it here and that's the way they do it there. Well, that's how you did it ten years ago. Well, guess what? We're not who we were ten years ago, right? And we're working towards a future that we all wanna keep here in this town, right? And that's what we've all been elected on. Um, you know, people are worried about their infrastructure, you know? What about people aren't paying attention? A road may have cost, let's say we had to repair eighteen sixty three. You know, from two eighty one down here to downtown Beverly. That may have cost us two million dollars three years ago. Today, it's ten million dollars. And guess what? Now we have eighteen rulers going up and down that road. So how much or how much time is that gonna last? It's not gonna last ten years anymore. It may only be three years and now we're gonna be pumping in a million dollars into it. We need to take all those things into consideration. And if we're not working together and talking and, hey, you know, this is before us, I'm a little bit worried about. Do you have any information on it? What can I look for? I may not, but I may say, okay, wait, let me make a phone call. Let me find out, you know, or or Danny can or, you know, cause we're all sharing phone numbers and and contacts. But that's what we're looking to get, right? And that's why I think while all of us are here volunteering our time, you know, and. Working towards a future that we all want to leave for our grandkids or whatever our children or anybody who's left for, you know, fifteen, twenty years. So if I can just inject, I was trying to read through the local government code with respect to. Uh, planning and zoning commission. I absolutely could be wrong about this. Um, so I'm gonna preface this by saying that. But my understanding is that the final recommendation from the planning and zoning commission must come from the chair. In writing, signed by the chair. So that's something I'd like for us to move into, but to the mayor's point. I think it would be useful if you're getting staff input, you know, as these things come before you. If your recommendation comes from you on behalf of the commission. With some discussion about how you arrived at your decision. So that what we are reading is not just yay or nay. But the thought process that went into uh, how you did that. And I know that that's extra work for you guys when you've gotta. Write something. But one thing that we might consider is requesting from the planning and zoning commission. Is a written report on the things that they put forward to us as part of the package that. Staff puts together uh, for us and that might give us some insight. Um, of the kind that you're talking about.
Personally, um, that was one of the main thoughts and ideas as we've been talking that I think could be helpful. I don't know if you do that.
Is it not recorded?
I think there's an issue with anything that the commission hasn't voted on. And and I know that the local government so talks about reports to the commission, but I've never heard it interpreted that that had to be assigned.
Well, maybe that's something for us to.
But that's gonna complicate our process. Um, because if we have to help the commission meet, hold a deliberation, vote on something and then wait for the commission to prove. Then uh. Uh, when are we gonna get that report and how are we gonna ensure that the commission? Uh, all believes that the rest of the commissioners believe that that's actually. Accurate and have all of that ready by the use of the post the next morning.
Understood.
For council, so. Um, the 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 commission absolutely can ensure it. I can't think of an example, but I'm sure somebody somewhere does that. Uh, but they probably have more than that.
I think the best way to do is to show up to P and Z meetings or watch the live broadcast.
There's a. There's a potential issue with that. We just completed newly elected. Um, official training, so we're experts on this. Uh, that our mere presence at a meeting could invalidate their ability to be independent. Uh, as independent advisors. And so that's the reason I don't vote P and Z meetings because, you know, not that I'm not interested. Um, and so I don't know if we, you know, listen to the recording after the fact, I don't know if that's sufficient insight. I I don't, I don't know. I think the point is they want you guys to be independent. You know, if we're sitting there staring at you.
Because it's really nice. Well, I'd like it if you can set. But but you know, it's a great asset. Um, you know, somebody like Leonard Joe or Ted there, Dave Bullock, man, when he sits in the back room, it's great. Well, this is what we were talking about at that time. And I really thought it's a great idea when when I guess it was the mayor that came up with that one. Y'all can have the idea of having one of us come to the city council meetings so we can clarify. And I believe actually does come up. But you know, that that's a, that's a really good thought as to, you know, cause sometimes and we've seen it, sometimes the. The client, the citizen will stand up and say something that is completely off the wall. I seen him do it in front of Danny. Okay, he's like, no, no, that's not what I said. That's not what happened, you know? So it is nice sometimes to have. One of our people at one of your meetings, so we can sure flesh out that.
I mean, I I think if something are up to, I I think it's a good thing, like I said, to have a standing item, like the chief gives his report. You know, Parks gives their report, finance, everybody gives a report, have somebody P and Z in case we have questions.
But it is good because like I said, their minds was about other things to say, oh, you know, I don't know if you call it lying or. You know, they're spinning, they're storing, whatever they wanna call it. But you know, and it's not, and they may have said something, oh, well, at P and Z and it's, you know, maybe that's not what we want. So it's nice that somebody was there, you know, and say, yeah, I do have something to say about it. And say about it in your report or however we wanna communicate, but we'll. Something that we're gonna need to work on. This isn't gonna be like designed and decided tonight. This is our first meeting. This is something about opening the door. And about us. Letting you know that we're here for you and you, you know, whatever y'all, we don't want y'all to feel like, you know, y'all are out there on the island by yourself.
Not at all. You're highly value, I value your opinion. That's why I wanna go to your meetings. I sat in your chair. And I want what comes from you to influence our city. Because wisdom comes from a group of people, not just from one person. The more wisdom that we have that we can share and how we deal with the issues that come before our city, I think the better decisions council.
Yeah, I think a report, I mean, you're gonna get, it's gonna be one sided. It's becoming from one side of the party. So you don't get the deliberation, you know, if it's a public comment. I mean, the best way to do it is to watch the broadcast. We worry about form, just watch the broadcast.
Yeah, I like that we vetted the zoom that one.
Yeah, oh, that's been, I watched the last one.
Yeah, I would. Vice versa, planning zoning or council.
And you know, another good thing is limit the people who get up to talk. Okay, by the time they get up there to talk to you, you should be telling them you got five, ten minutes to do your presentation and that's it. Don't keep going because your meetings are going until, oh my God, and I feel so sorry for y'all. And it it's like eleven, twelve o'clock and you're just on two item. They should come in and be able to limit, you know, where you're gonna stop.
And that's how, I know we're able to limit, you know, three minutes for public comment for the actual applicant. Are we able to?
Presentation from that, I don't know.
That'd be a good question.
Yeah, I don't know.
I would love to get a great.
Like get off, get off track, right? And then they start introducing your stuff again, which you don't have, right? And you're just hearing it, hearsay. Whatever they're doing because you haven't had time to study it, right? Don't let it.
I think we can.
So you're talking about the developer. Sure you should. I'm talking about. My church wanted to, I'm talking about with the church. When the church came in and wanted to resign that piece of property where that horse barn is. And with the first five people that came up were like, this is the facts, what we like, what we don't like. And then we had two hours of.
You can't limit three minutes. That's how we have it on the documentation now. If we put in three minutes, they have a right to come up and talk, right? If they sign up, they can sign up prior to your meeting, where your meeting starts, get your sheet. That's what we've been doing here. And keep them at their three minutes.
So we can't call and say that that's a heavy fact.
You cannot say any word.
We represent the citizens of Beverly and everybody has a right to speak. Right, I understand. I just was putting my.
I know when the council meeting, you can gavel up.
You can keep it on track.
You can do at least one person say, uh. The mayor used to make sure the list be completed beforehand.
Yes.
If somebody just wants to come up and they didn't sign up, we don't have.
You do not have to let them come up. And that has been a big thing because we have that here to where people are in. Sign up, you have signed up before. I get the sheet up here. I have it before the meeting starts or within a few minutes. Three minutes per person and I call them and and, you know, the less that they're signed up. And then you have their signature on there and you also know who it was.
You know, that's easy to say.
Because I felt the last time, what I'm trying to do now, especially with the work for Kraut, is. And I think some of you may have been there, I just given all about like what the process is going to look like.
And you did a good job. You did a really good job.
It's a good opportunity like when, before the meeting start, like at the beginning of our presentation, have a slide that's. There that says that you'd like to speak, please sign up. That way, as soon as the meeting starts, that sign up is closed.
And so I'm gonna have what that she can put up on the door and then the sign and sheet is right there.
And also you 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 don't have to accept extra data at the meeting, like someone. Cause it's not public information, so.
Public, it's open to the public.
What you're bugging are, for giving at that time, if it's not accurate, then then that's the information. It's gonna go on under gen uh, so any information. You can just say reject it, like say this not what's in my packet, this not what's in the public posted, you know, online. And you can reject it right there because, you know, that's one thing that that you do not and should not review at that time. Because you only have the information posted that that you have in your package.
Would would we be allowed if they were about to present us with something new to say? Um, would you like to us, if you'd like for us to review this, we can postpone it now without even discussing? Or would you like us to discuss without this information and give them the choice?
Absolutely. And but don't accept it, I mean, because you haven't had time to review it. How are you gonna make a decision on it?
Yeah, don't be put on the spot. I mean. P D Ds are already complicated to turn your book and and it doesn't need, it has room for improvement. And we've identified the same signs, you know, we have committees going for that to approve it. And now that we've got a functioning city now again with city manager in place, Danny Beck, planning. You know, we need to start working back all that, getting some of these ordinances and the. The processes, you know, refine a little bit better so you don't get, like you've mentioned, fifteen variances that could be maybe. Should be potentially, you know, this. But it could change, you know, but just approve it, right? It's a blanket approval, you know, right?
And I don't think a P D D has to be a one meaning item.
There is a.
And I wish there was a way for like each of those items on there. I mean, rather than us going through and saying, okay, we're breaking down, I have two point two. Into two point two A on this variant, you know, and voting for each one. It, cause it it felt last time almost like a a bill that comes forward and all this.
That was by.
Let me just say that. If you would have read it, if you read each one of these variants, there was also wording in it. One of them said. Only on the perfect rectangular lot. Guess how many perfect rectangular lots are on there? Eleven, how about the three hundred and sixty one? Eleven. So that variant. Was gonna apply to the two hundred and sixty whatever and not to this, those eleven. And it was a big deal that you need to catch.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
So those are things y'all have to have time. You can't wait for them to present that to you right there because you're gonna miss it, you know? You've got to study it and and so taking stuff at the last minute and letting them tell you and walking through it, they didn't read it. When they went through it, they didn't read that part, but it was on.
Is there a way, I mean, and this might be a state law situation or maybe we're gonna be tightened up with our ordinances, the P D Ds. I mean, I like the idea of variances happening later. We can allow that. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to think of like, what's the most um. Impactful use of the P D D to get like your actual point across and then make you cover all of the other smaller things later somehow.
Well, the 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 developer is going to ensure it's all at once. So because there's usually a third versus a contingency period or a five land, so. Doing it just like that won't fit within the traditional market uh. Of how land is sold and wanted. So that's why I'm saying they have to be concurrent. Now, you could have a P D D that just offer us the uses that they want. And maybe has a side plan and then the variances have to come forward on the variant standard. It's a bit of a loophole right now.
And it's a little savings. When I was, when I was trying to figure out, why are they doing, when I called you, why are they doing a P D D rather than? Just doing variances. I did the math, like, okay, he's asking for, you know, ten variances that get actually paid per variance. And application to the city paying a lot more just like the P D D application is. So I think that's a little bit also, you know, I'm sorry.
No, no, that that's true. So uh, that's definitely a model to choose. Um. We just need direction from council. If you want to set it up that way, it would be more expensive for applicants with lots of. Or like projects will have more expense, but you'll be able to consider items. And actually, I think that we did that, something similar with the quick trip when it came through. Because they had a P D D that they all set some tree areas and stuff that were separate. And we considered things to change on that one.
What's the impact if we if we went that route with respect to like the shot clock department?
So the P D D is not covered by the shot clock. Shot clock only applies to uh, to subdivision plants. And so uh, you can seek a plat variance before filing a plat. Uh, which is what um, has happened in the past. Uh, and the shot clock is not triggered because you haven't actually filed a plat. Because sometimes the variance changes the plat so much that it's not, doesn't make sense to file a plat without the variance. Get the variance completely reengineered, completely changed the plat. And that's why sometimes folks will ask for plat variance prior to filing.
So I've heard you say that if we, if we broke the variances out from.
So I've heard you say that if we, if we broke the variances out from the P D D application, that that would make the process more complicated for the developer.
It will.
Can you have a sense of how, I mean, I, I think the goal is not to deny more things, it's just to, for achieve clarity.
Example, many of the modifications that were called in the P D D were a day. So if they had been variance requests, they would have had to been variance besides. And so I think we're getting that information on the second round, uh, now, of more precision of, okay, you said that, but what does that look like as far as what provision of the ordinance you're actually trying to change, and how are you changing? And we've gotten that now, uh, from the applicant base. But, um, if they had done variances from the beginning, would have had that. So, also, though, tie your hands, because if you go through the variance process, you have to meet those criteria. And so you don't necessarily have to do that for the P D D process, I'm not saying that's good enough, I'm just saying that's the way, you know, that's the short.
Understood, understood.
You can find yourself with a project, perhaps the council wants to approve, but can't justify the variance under the variance process name.
Hmm.
I, it's a risk, I think.
Yeah. For Danny Beck's master class, I mean, just.
Yeah. So we're staying the way we are.
We always hear that with P N Z, they take the initial response and say, no, we need to get more.
Yeah, you can only postpone it if it's on more.
Right. And so now we're getting more.
It's not a quick and fast.
And the idea of something like a massive development, three, four hundred home development, it's gonna go the traditional P N Z, they have council, one week apart and get approved, it's not really realistic or something. Uh, we could have two or three meetings of P N Z and two or three meetings of council on something that.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yes, absolutely.
Relatively new to this, um, uh, it was brought up in the meeting the last time, it was like my first rodeo again. Uh, I know the state of Texas is taking a lot of power away from the city, um, it was almost thrown at us from the developer that, uh, there could be more power taken away from the city in this regard. And almost like a whole, you know, like, this is the best plan.
Sure, that's a good, yeah.
Is there, um, can we get briefed on some of the stuff that's coming down the pipeline from the state of Texas? I mean, I know there's, uh, great, I know, I know, planning commission, we're bound by law, but we just look at what, from what I understand, we're looking at black and white and denying or approving, but, um.
Well, he mentioned that, right, you're a little speculative, I mean, they're starting to do it in a big city, but it's, it's just speculation right now.
Yeah.
It's been.
And they should come out.
Tell you, it's come, yeah.
A hundred and fifty thousand and higher population is what that applied to. So what they're saying is they're coming at you next, you know.
He's saying, this is what the policy.
Well, I didn't like the straw mark for one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what they do, that's what they do.
Exactly.
Y'all just thought they were blue sales. Well, I understand that, but I think there was some discussion about that, um, as far as, you know, we don't want the P D D to come in there, if our, um, you know, um, if Texas does come down on us, we don't have power to kind of state what we want for our city. And we talked about, you know, tenure plan and.
But that's where you use your variance, right? So all, are all the ideas and all the things that we have in there, we have a tree ordinance, we have, you know, we have a problem, and we have our roads, and, and the things that they need to be looking at right now is water, right? And we know that, so there's other ways, there's other ways of, you know, just, uh, working around those things that we still have in our back pocket, that we still can apply, because that's what our city has improved for us to apply, right? And to use them what they want in their future, so just gotta get a little bit creative about how you look at that and.
I just wanted to be educated, because if, if this is our best bet, you know, then I don't want to go through the practical files, so I, I'm the type of person that only have all kinds of reasons for it.
Sure.
And that's, that's so around, if I'm thinking on the turner, I'm just trying to get.
Doesn't matter, I just want to.
Did you put our turn on what?
Helen was.
No, nobody really does.
Yeah. You know, variance exists for a reason, you just gotta use the stretch, I mean, you know, we got the tree preservation ordinance, there was something that came across, I'll be honest, though. The developer strategically laid out his buildings, his drainage, his roads, everything to protect the most amount of trees as possible. And to me, I mean, that looks like they fulfilled the fundamental reason we have a tree preservation ordinance, so I mean.
That's the spirit of the whole thing.
Exactly, you gotta think about it that way.
Yes.
We're trying to meet the greater picture, picture here, you know, it's not all the oversight, so I mean, there's a reason we have this ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely, but, um, I was just thinking, like, yeah, I don't think Texas has taken power, it's been a big way, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's, even if they're fighting.
It, it's not likely that, that power will be coming back to the cities anytime soon unless there's a potential change in government. We did have a, a meeting with, uh, with some people a couple of months ago, just to find out what it would actually take to try to manipulate legislation in the state of Texas. And it's almost an insurmountable task to try to move legislation through Texas that would be beneficial to our city or, or any small cities, which is why we're affiliated with Texas Municipal League, and they have a little bit more leverage, perhaps as a larger organization, but still.
To your point, after legislative session is completed, I would also appreciate a briefing of some sort, and maybe we could just sort of make it a standing thing that as these things get passed.
Yeah.
Maybe we have another workshop where poor Danny has to stand up, or, or Mike Castro, and give us a kind of breakdown, this is what it means for the city of Liberty, this is kind of what, uh, we're up against, this is what is, you know, this next deadline, September, I mean, I'm waiting through all, I think there's a hundred and forty bills out of the last thing.
T M L, actually. But they can duck.
And I interject.
We're. So, do, do they have access to the T M L legislative update? Is there a way?
They don't know.
Policy, yeah.
Does it provide a, a broadcast or a video of it, so you, unless you pay, go to it.
That's my question, this is kind of a.
Then you don't get to know what it was.
And I'll just say, because I'm reading through it right now, the, the summary that it is very dense and leadalive, and it would be lovely to have.
The four hundred city bills that's.
Would. The mayor of Protown, Fredericksburg, actually does it, and she's been sending up to our council of mayors, and maybe I can ask her to come over and give us a presentation, she offered, and she's really good about it, and that's all she does, she follows. So I, I get updates of what passed and how it affects our small hill country towns, and so she said she could come and do a presentation, and we can try and set that up so everybody can tell it would be public. Um, you know, it's just like, we're gonna have a, we're, oh, and, I guess, did, Sandra, the, the flyer hasn't gone out yet, because I guess I did. But we're also having a, the Texas Water Company's coming in to do a public forum for Forte only, it'll be a public forum, so that's gonna be open here next month. Um, so, yes, we can start doing those, have them come in here, and she can, she can probably give us a good legislative update, she does a really good job of that, because she's watching just what's happening to our small towns and public.
Would it be possible to have council or P N D again?
Uh, what do you mean?
Because we used to have council.
Legal.
Legal counsel at planning and zoning.
That was a decision that the current attorneys made, that P N Z is not entitled to legal counsel, that's, but we used to have a city in.
I'd, I'd say that's the city's decision, not.
Mast and arrow, yeah.
Hey, it was, it was not said in case.
It was, so P N Z things did come up where there was the sort of, hey, are we allowed to say this or not? It was nice having.
There was value to that.
Oh, absolutely, I get it.
Alright.
Okay, so you know what, I'm gonna do, I can ask.
Yeah, that's.
We'll ask, we will ask, find out what, what the history was, I don't know what the history was at this point, um, but we can call, find out, maybe what's going on.
And then also.
Mr. Cash, do you have anything to add to our proof here?
Not that I haven't already said.
Alright.
Thank you for asking.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a code compliant person?
We budgeted for one, so we'll be getting one.
We, we have, the planning department is currently, our planners are actually working during that interim.
Okay.
So Danny and them interim are handling that, and we have, we're budgeting for one, full time. I know there's a lot, a lot of apps.
It is.
So, so I know the mayor mentioned, uh, Chase Bing, like, so he said that the, I've, I've, I don't report that.
Code compliant.
Code compliant.
So we said. They don't, uh, they said, uh, planning is.
Well, it's about time, because Chase line's still there.
Yeah, I drove, I drove by four days.
The one on the window?
Just, we called it on him.
Yeah, the one on the window was still up.
The window maybe, but the, all the freestanding.
Yes, but the ones on the window that we told them, that was there, they were supposed to take down, did not have that.
That's the best way to handle it right now, I just, I report every one I see.
We do, too.
Take it on yourself.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't approve, or we didn't, uh, plan, just write a man anything that they didn't do, that, that they went against our.
They ordered a bunch of extra vendors, and banners that weren't bonded now, uh, vinyl stickers in the windows, two percent free checking.
Like, it's part of the.
Oh, those are.
Dark sky compliant.
Those are there.
Those are still there. They usually add that presentation, you know, the show's gonna happen.
Yeah, well, it's like twenty seven hundred.
Yeah.
Luminescence, twenty eight, seventy eight, kind of in the back. Yeah, with the white.
Was that Chase or was that seven J, seven B seven or whatever was the gentle?
Seven to seven.
Seven, seven.
Yeah, we, we've got a lot of that, so, McDonald's has about forty seven signs of, you know, they literally have.
We have Chick-fil-A quitting signs everywhere, there are Wal-Mart's, parking lots.
Chick-fil-A had a big old cow on the roof.
Yeah.
Chase got that.
The letters wanted it.
I didn't say anything personal for a period of time, because I thought it was.
So how, let's go back, so we can get out of here, what, how else could we go?
Hey, I would, I wouldn't mind more of these conversations, so when we know they're coming forward, we kind of keep a list of things that come up and questions that we have, uh, I know we talked a long time, and I know, you, you guys were saying earlier about there's committee for improving the ordinance and things like that, uh. I would love to have more of those conversations as well.
I'll also mention, there's always the opportunity for P N Z and council to consider items.
Yeah.
We don't do it often, but if it's a major item, uh, then call a joint, they would all have a discussion and they'd vote.
Yeah, I like that.
I would say, too, you don't need to wait for us to ask you your opinion, if something comes up and you all feel as a body that there's something we should be thinking about, let us know.
Yeah, or something as complicated as the Cardy branch, it could be appropriate, could be a joint.
A joint.
Or something that could be that complicated, and we'll have to see what the, uh.
Good, that looks hard.
Not something we.
Yeah, because you already had a meeting on it, is that complicated at all?
See, not really, because we're gonna have another meeting, which I suspect we're not gonna come up with full resolution at, and that could be their, their, your first.
Right.
What is it, do you, don't you have a schedule, I mean, what is that?
Or the P N Z.
No. Are they coming back to the city?
Uh, not, not on the staff level, no.
Have you received the, the email documentation from him, the further explanation of?
We've received it, um, and we've been going back and forth trying to get it polished.
Okay.
And get a more precise.
Uh, and what do you think of water thing?
I don't think.
I was just gonna ask that.
That's been pushed to October.
I was gonna ask.
You dropped those water tower on the Cardy branch, is there any?
That.
Um, you know what, let's try.
I was gonna ask.
Wait, 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 hold on.
You got it, man.
Okay. Um, let's not talk about specific development in here, um, you can always make a phone call.
Maybe a future.
Okay.
Future items.
Okay, so are we just talking here, like, how we can work better together and, um, continue to, to have this, we can do these quarterlies, that works, um, we can figure out how to make that happen, so we can go through this. But, you know, we're here for y'all, and, you know, we know y'all are here for us, so, um, you know, just figure out how we can do this better, stick to, you know, what we have to be able to, to pass or not pass, you know, any variances and look at the whole picture. We'll be sharing information with you, like, what we're getting, like, CPS, Texwater, um, building that relationship with them towards, it's actually pretty tight right now, and so they, they're giving us lots.
So was it decided that y'all are gonna listen to the meetings, the planning and zoning meetings, uh, the Zoom meetup, or is Ashley gonna?
For me, I'll either sit in the back, back there and have a time, y'all, and you can see when I walk in, I'll sit back there in the back, and I'll come in and, or I'll listen to it on, um, you know, and see what I say.
Yeah, I'll be watching.
Well, we always see, okay, this guy's, we always.
I just, I just sit back there. And I'm not there for anybody, intimidate anybody, you know, I just like to hear what you're talking about, what you're saying, so I'm.
I think it's a little much coming to something, see council meetings, and I think if y'all decide that you wanna add the, uh, you know, uh, a report.
I think that's a great idea.
You know, I think it just makes sense.
I think you're, I mean, do we stop, like, starting of the report, though, the complications of that?
So I, I do have some concerns about, um, about that, uh, from a legal standpoint, anything council receives, that becomes part of, part of the case that we challenge, um, and so. A simple motion, approval denial, approval of condition, something like that, is very simple, very formal, a written report, um, that includes discussion of things that may not have actually swayed the decision, but included in there, and now we held against this because it's in writing. Um, because if you have one council, let's say one commissioner says something inappropriate, I don't like that kind of person with those kind of things. And then they commission votes to deny, but the others did it because they don't like flooding, so now we put it in, we can say, well, that guy said that, but there's no evidence that that ever.
Understand, sure, understood.
This is probably, if you were the report coming before the, the, and, you know.
You mean, like, the commission approving the report?
No, 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 when I'm talking about, I mean, like, you're coming.
If it's one member saying this is my perception, but what happened, that's great.
Okay, yeah.
Right, but something that's official, this is the commission's official, and it's more than that motion and vote, um, we've got the issue of timing, and then we've got a potential issue with increasing the opportunities for legal challenges.
Yeah, I think we had narrowed it down to maybe like a live showing up and, you know, like we did for the other one.
So no, what I'm hearing is no report separate from what comes forward already, but maybe having a member of planning and zoning attend the city council, in case we have questions, is that permissible?
I would think so.
Because we, we.
In the past, and, and I forget, the world chairman used to be, oh, even before that, I'm not going way into the past now, would come to every meeting, um, and, and give a report on what they felt the commission did. Uh, we did that for a long time.
And is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, no one's ever rejected, the attorneys never said.
So is that similar to the, the other reports of chief and, and financial, where they're coming forward before the agenda items, and just getting a broad blanket?
It's up in the state, in the, in the report section, and, uh, in the past, the chairman or one of the other members would come and say, so these three things, they're on your agenda item, uh, are made of concerns, if they had concerns, where this, this, this is why we recommended denial.
I don't think there'd be anything keeping us, when we are actually at that agenda item, from saying, for, hey, Ashley, how, you know, based on your regulation, what would be, you know?
I don't think you're out the way.
Yeah.
Well, you decide, yeah, yeah.
It's the item.
Yeah.
It's set the item, we don't.
Maybe the takeaway here is to sort of figure out.
Okay, so this was our first meeting to open this up, to get the ideas, we're gonna have to work out the little quirks and how we wanna do it, fine tune it, but, you know, one, we wanted to say, you know, congratulations for being on the board, thank you, we appreciate everything y'all are doing out there. And we're here to work through this and to work through, towards, you know, the vision of our city, and, you know, work for our constituents here as much as you, and, um, I think we can do a good job working together, okay? And we'll work, we wanna have the open dialogue, we need to, uh, y'all can call.
Phone number, you can call. What would be the best way for us to share?
For.
For.
On the.
Together.
Um.
We can't, you know what, I'll put together an email that, and I'll send y'all.
I mean, the speaker put out a list of the topic information for the people on the board to, to, to cancel that.
Yeah, but they didn't have their, they had their emails, what they give.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Um.
And if you wanna share your, your phone number with somebody, by all means, that's up to you, because I'm not gonna share.
Just be aware, anything that you said.
Yeah.
It's not only public record, but.
But I'm doing it.
Come back to us. I hate to be that.
Sure.
That, um, boys are reading, pretty well. Just vote and not expound on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, but I appreciate y'all's time, I promise we will be up. Yeah, so, but I appreciate y'all's time, I promise we'll be, yeah. We're gonna be down here. If y'all have anything else to add, thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you, and, uh, we appreciate y'all. Alright, we'll set up a date to meet again. Okay.
I got it, you're, I got it.